Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to have a little warm weather, though. I hear it's going down to 50 again, you know. My famous line, which isn't that famous because I know other people use it. Wait five minutes, it's Michigan. Yeah, anyways, so, first of all, I'd like to thank each and every one of you. I would not be on the State Board of Education if it was not for people like you who were so helpful to me during the election. And especially to Gary, who this was really the first meeting I attended, just trying to figure out, okay, how do I maneuver through this? Because as most of you know, I had to be nominated by the Democratic Party first and then run as a Democrat with my colleague Tiffany Tilly, who is from Southfield. And the two of us ran together then after we were nominated by the party and were successful in November. But we could not have done that without the support of all of you and many other people throughout the state. I really enjoyed myself during the campaign process for lots of reasons. Yes, there was a lot of places to go, but I was reminded of the wonderful diversity here in the state of Michigan. I'm originally from Upper Peninsula, but I've lived here almost all of my adult life. It lenses, you know, where you think everything's like this, and it's not. And so it was good for me to go up to Alpena and Traverse City and to Sault Ste. Marie and Senegna and Mackinac Island and be reminded of the school districts there and their particular challenges and what they are doing as communities to meet the needs of their children. But I will tell you that I heard some common themes. It didn't matter who I was talking to. If I was talking to parents, grandparents, children, students, administrators, teachers, it was always, we want our schools to be safe. We need resources in order to provide the best opportunities we can for children, and we want to make sure that our schools stay open and remain part of our community. We don't need somebody coming in here and deciding that it needs to close and somebody else come along and take it over. And that was common throughout the state. So I had attended State Board meetings for nine years prior to winning a seat on the Board. I'm recently retired from McComb Intermediate School District. One of my job responsibilities was to attend every State Board meeting, and I literally went. For those of you who might know Michael LeVault, who's superintendent in McComb ISD, he was adamant that I needed to be in the room, and I am eternally thankful to him for that because it does make a difference. You can, however, live stream every State Board meeting if you're so inclined. They are normally the second Tuesday of every month. They start at 9:30 in the morning. If you go to MDE's website, it is right on the front page. All you have to do is click the arrow, and you're watching the Board meeting. And many, many people do that. We don't have too many people in the audience unless something is a hot topic for public communication. So, but it's different now that I'm a Board member. So I'm going to talk about the latest news from the Board and then probably open it up for questions on things you may have questions about. We did this past Tuesday offer a contract to Dr. Michael Rice. He is currently the superintendent in Kalamazoo, Michigan. He has been superintendent there for 12 years. So let me walk you through that process. Unfortunately, a year ago this past Tuesday, ironically, Brian Liston, our superintendent, passed away from pancreatic cancer. It was very quick, and when that happened, there was actually statutes that said because it was an election year and new members were being voted on that year for the State Board, the State Board was not able to hire a new State Superintendent until the new Board was seated. So they did some preliminary work. They hired a search firm, and they worked on the job description. But the job description and the application did not go out until January of this year. Thankfully, we have a very, very competent woman, Sheila Ailes, who had been the chief deputy superintendent with Brian at MDE. And she graciously took the interim position and have served in that position this entire year while we've been going through the process of finding a new State Superintendent. Sheila said from the beginning she did not want to be State Superintendent. She is a curriculum and instruction person, and she is smiling quite a bit right now that we have hired a State Superintendent, I will tell you. But I will also tell you that she has done a phenomenal job because, keep in mind, she had to help the department through a grieving process also. And then keep the department going, knowing that somebody else was going to come in possibly with their vision of how the department should work. So that's not always easy to do. So no matter who I'm talking to, I always want to take a minute and praise Sheila for the work that she's done and continues to do. So the process for hiring a State Superintendent, we got 52 applications. And so late in April, the Board met, and it is the only time during this entire process that we went into closed session. And the only reason we did closed session at that point is because all 52 applicants requested that their name not be in public unless we decided that we wanted to interview them. And I can certainly, and I'm sure you can too, understand why that would be their request. So we did go into closed session and looked at all 52 applications. So that took us a few hours because there's eight of us, and of course, everybody has some opinions. But we came to consensus pretty quickly that afternoon, and we ended up interviewing five individuals. Dr. Brenda Casilius, who had been the State Superintendent in Minnesota, and she had just stepped down from that position January 1st of this year. A Dr. Eric Thomas, he was a turnaround specialist from the state of Georgia. Dr. Randy Leapa, who is currently the Wayne Risa Superintendent. Dr. Michael Rice, Superintendent of Kalamazoo Public Schools. And Dr. Janice Swift, who is currently the Superintendent in Ann Arbor Public Schools. We had three from Michigan and two from out of Michigan. So we set up the interview process, and at that point, everything was in public. So, and I will tell you, not many people came to the Board room, but I do know that lots of people were watching it on live stream because I would hear from people later and say, oh, I heard that interview or this interview. Each candidate for the first interview was asked 24 questions. They were given the questions ahead of time so that they could prepare. And each candidate had an hour and a half. So each one of us would take a couple of questions, and we asked some questions. Once that process was over, and we did that over a two-day period, once that process was over, then we had to determine how do we narrow this down. And it was not easy because all five were highly, highly qualified. Now, Dr. Casilius actually had to interview via Skype because not only had she applied and gotten an interview here in Michigan, but she had applied and gotten an interview and a callback interview for the city of Boston. So Boston had a process, which is not unusual in big urban districts, of asking their finalists to come and literally spend about a week within the city. And so she, they had called her first before we had, and so she had made a commitment to be there. So she was able to Skype in for her first interview. So we went into deliberation again in public and determined that we wanted to interview three individuals. Dr. Casilius, the previous superintendent from Minnesota. Dr. Rice from Kalamazoo, and Dr. Swift from Ann Arbor. However, we knew that Dr. Casilius was a finalist in Boston. And so we had a backup plan because many of the Board members felt as though Dr. Leapa had had a strong interview also. So we said, if Dr. Casilius drops out because she takes a job in Boston before we're able to get to second interviews, then we'll invite Dr. Leapa to come and interview. It's a good thing we did that because that's indeed what happened. About three days after that, Dr. Casilius was offered the job in Boston, and she chose to take that job. So when we had the second interviews this past Tuesday, it was Dr. Rice, Dr. Leapa, and Dr. Swift. Again, about an hour and a half interview, but we cut the questions down this time to about, I think there were 14, because we wanted an opportunity for Board members to ask some follow-up questions. I'm sure you can understand when you're in an interview process, somebody might say something, and you're sort of going, well, gee, I'd like you to maybe go a little bit further with that. And so we had an opportunity to ask some follow-up questions also. In the afternoon, after Dr. Swift had finished her interview, we went into, again, public deliberations. This was all in public. We got a little busier in the Board room at that point because the media all came because they wanted to be there because they knew we were probably going to make a decision on Tuesday. And about an hour and a half after deliberating back and forth, the majority of the Board voted, and it was a 5-3 vote to ask Dr. Michael Rice to be the new State Superintendent for Michigan. But I will tell you, the three individuals who voted no on the motion, because we had to put a motion out, made comments prior to their vote saying they saw positive attributes of Dr. Rice. They just felt that Dr. Leapa was the better candidate at that point. But they made it very clear that they were there, ready to work with Dr. Rice because they understood at that point that that was the way the vote was going to go. So the vote was 5-3. That's not unusual sometimes for Boards of Education, be they local boards or State Boards. If you have a candidate who is your preference, then it's not unusual for you to say, I'm still going to vote for that person, but understand, I am going to work very closely with the new State Superintendent. So let me tell you a little bit about Dr. Rice. I do know him because, again, as I worked at the McComb Intermediate School District, McComb has always been very active in state issues also, and so Dr. Rice and I had several opportunities over the years to work on some issues that were coming out of the state with just later and the governor then, who was not certainly as supportive or friendly as our current governor is to public education. Dr. Rice has been in Kalamazoo for 12 years. Kalamazoo is a very diverse community. Their free and reduced lunch is at about 70, 75 percent. Some of you may be aware of the Kalamazoo Promise. The Kalamazoo Promise precedes Dr. Rice. It is a group of community individuals, philanthropists, I said the word, who have set up an endowment fund for any child who starts in Kalamazoo Schools and finishes. That child will receive funding for four-year college. It is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for children and for that community. So, but Dr. Rice has been there for the bulk of the Kalamazoo Promise, which is still there and vibrant, thankfully. It's a diverse community, large population of Hispanic children, African-American children, and again, children who are facing some issues related to poverty. Dr. Rice also shared with us, which I wasn't aware of, that they had the largest homeless population last year at about 800 to 900 students, which was surprising to me in Kalamazoo. I don't know why it was surprising, but I think we all would probably think, well, probably the largest population of homeless would be in the big urban areas like Detroit or Flint or Saginaw, and instead it was in Kalamazoo. But he has a reputation for being child-centered. He also has a reputation for being able to move the needle on student achievement, which personally, from my perspective, was an important piece. So he shared with us some data, and in particular, advanced placement classes. They started five, six years ago, deciding that they wanted more and more high school students taking advanced placement classes and taking the test at the end. They weren't necessarily looking for, well, they want the students to do well on those tests. They wanted those students participating in AP because those are rigorous standards. And they, unfortunately, what happens is sometimes we judge children by, oh, they got an A in math, therefore they should be able to take AP. And then you have another child who maybe got a C in math, and you start making, and we all do it, we start making assumptions, oh, they'd never be able to handle the rigor. And that's not true. And what I admired about Kalamazoo and the leadership of Dr. Rice is they said, we're going to throw that out the window, and we're going to encourage students to take AP classes. And they have seen a tremendous increase in participation in AP classes over there. And they've also seen some increase in their student achievement. Is it where they want it to be? Absolutely not. But it's moving in the right direction slowly, but surely. Dr. Rice, not only having been superintendent in Kalamazoo, he was superintendent in a district in Indiana. He was the chief financial officer for Lansing Public Schools several years ago, so he understands the finance side. And when he graduated from college, he's from the East Coast, he's from New York City, he graduated from college, he started his teaching career in Washington, D.C., which is one of the most diverse school districts in the United States. So he comes with that background, and he's coming to Michigan Department of Ed. I emailed him yesterday and congratulated him, and he responded back to me and said, this is extremely humbling experience for him, and he knows he has a lot to learn. But I think he will do a tremendous job for us. He's got big shoes to walk into after running Liston, especially as it relates to dealing with legislators. Thankfully, again, he's got the executive office where they are on the same page related to public ed, but it's still not going to be easy with the House and Senate. He understands that, and will begin working on that as soon as he takes the position. Technically, he'll take it, I believe, July 1st, but I'm, you know, that's what we're expecting at this point. So, so that was long, but I want to be clear with any groups that I talk to about that process. What's interesting to me, and I don't know what the Michigan State process is, but it is not as transparent. And I'm not saying that to ding Michigan State because I think that's true U of M and Wayne State also, that they do some things behind closed doors when they're, because Michigan State's out looking for a new president at this point. So I'm proud of the State Board and the fact that we kept, except for that first meeting, we have kept everything very transparent. So if any of you want to go back and look at interviews, you can do so. They're on YouTube right now because the department has those sessions closed caption, and that takes a while, but they're available on YouTube right now. If you want to look at or listen to some of those interviews to kind of get a sense of the answers that Dr. Rice in particular gave. The other thing, I'll put that aside for a minute. When Gary called me and said, do I talk about this? I said, sure. And then I laughed and I said, you know, you would expect at this point I'd be getting lots of emails and phone calls about the State Superintendentcy. And I was getting a few, but not half as many as I was on social studies standards. We have been, the department has been five years revising social studies standards, K-12, but they really started out with, they were only going to flip sixth and seventh grade, and it was geography standards, and then they were going to work on a few economic standards at the high school level. Well, I was a social studies teacher. Anybody a social studies teacher? A little bit. We'll argue with you forever, right?
True.
About the word democracy, the word republic, are we constitutional republic? You know, we just will. So I still remember, I was at the Board meeting the day they decided they were going to redo social studies standards or look at them. And Michael Plantagenon was still superintendent then, and Mike says, because he was getting ready to retire, so this was probably February of that year, he says, we'll get this done on my watch. And after the meeting, I went up to him, because I knew Mike, and I said, Mike, you're nuts. You're not going to get this done in four months. Well, it's now five years. We are hoping that the Board can be able to approve them on, in our meeting, at our meeting in June. They are out for public comment again. What happened a year and a half ago was, we were, the Board was ready to go with them, and there was some pushback from some conservatives, Senator Kolbeck in particular, and an individual from Oakland County, Judge Warren. Judge Warren had been a Board member back in the 90s, I think. But, and he's a strict constructionist. He looks at the Constitution and he reads it word for words, and that's how he interprets it. And so MDE decided they go back to the drawing table, and what happened was the standards got skewed very, very far to the right. Things were left out, you know, that were just, I mean, people couldn't believe it. And so we had to bring it back to the center. Now, serving on the Board with us, we're six Democrats, two Republicans right now. Tom McMillan, who used to be State Representative from Oakland County here, and he had a little tiny ditch in McComb County, up in the north part there by Romeo. Tom has already shared his views that he's not happy about this latest rendition because he thinks now has gone too far to the left. And Judge Warren has sent us a pretty lengthy email with some suggestions for changes, et cetera. So the department's looking at that, and they are also doing listening tours around the state. You can also go on the website, read the standards. I'll warn you right now, they're about 150 pages long, because this is social studies standards, kindergarten through 12th grade, all the disciplines. So it's, you know, it's a pretty comprehensive document. But you can go on, read them, and you can do comments online also. So at this point, again, the plan is is to have it on the agenda in June, but I don't know that 100% sure yet because they're still out there listening. They may have to go back and tweak it again. I try to be as open-minded as possible, so I have read down through Judge Warren's comments in particular, and in trying to figure out exactly some of his philosophical issues at this point because I'm just not seeing them clearly. So, but I am still working on that. I think, I don't believe at this point, though, from what I've read, that we need to hold up on this any longer. Because what I always try to think about as a State Board member and when I was administrator, et cetera, how is this affecting the teacher in the classroom? We've got teachers out there who, you know, and this isn't a big secret, who have already gone ahead and made the switch on the sixth and seventh grade because, again, it has The issue is, local boards and local administrators can't go forward and support too much with resources until we put the stamp of approval on it, and I understand that. So we want to be able to support the teachers in the field. We want to be able to provide them with professional development based on what the standards are. And I think after five years, we're close. I'm not, I'm not going to stand up here, especially being a kid, and say, you know, we're going to, we're there because I don't know that for sure.
When you talk about the other groups that were giving input, is this from the one that at one time came across with the part about how they wanted the word democratic principles removed?
Yes. Senator Kolbeck had an issue with democratic core values.
Small d, by the way.
Yeah. And he just felt as though that was too harsh with the word democratic in there. So again, like I say, if I wasn't a social studies teacher, my husband's a math major, he's not, wasn't a teacher, but he's like, he just goes, you're arguing over words. I said, you have to be a social studies teacher to understand that. We can argue over words. But that was a major for him. So part of it is also, again, putting yourself in the shoes of a teacher who's trying to explain this to children and help them understand that the diversity of the United States of America is we're diverse thinkers. And you want to help them learn how to think, you have to be careful because, you know, you can't indoctrinate them by any stretch of the imagination. So these definitions, et cetera, are difficult in how they're presented, et cetera. But I, we've got to help children understand, these are the principles we were built on back in the 1600s, 1700s, 1800s, and also understand that there's parts of our history we should be ashamed of, absolutely ashamed of. It's not to say we're a terrible country. It's to say, we got to make sure nothing like this ever happens again. And be honest with, with our conversations with kids. Sometimes we underestimate, I know, we all underestimate kids sometimes. So they get right to the, you know, my favorite story, I always bring up my granddaughters. By the way, does anybody know why you have to be a parent first before you can be a grandparent? Because, you know, the parenting part.
I agree.
Thank you. But my favorite president is Thomas Jefferson. And I've always, you know, I took the girls to Washington last year, and we had to go to the Jefferson Memorial, and I just sit there in awe and read all the placards, et cetera. And so my youngest granddaughter, third grade, learned that Thomas Jefferson had slaves. So she comes home one day and says to me, Grandma, I don't know how you could like Thomas Jefferson, he had slaves. And she's absolutely right. So she put me on notice that I better have some good explanations here. And that's fine because that, isn't that what we want? Is people having dialogue and thinking? So that's why I taught social studies, because that's one place where I felt as though we could have those conversations. But anyways, so I was off on a tangent there. The State Board, the other thing I've learned, which I didn't realize sitting in the peanut gallery over there, we approve, if you would look at one of our agendas, and our agendas are always online, you will see probably a page of grants that we approve just about every month. That is not, for the most part, state money. That is all federal money coming in in various different forms, and MDE is the flow-through for it. So it flows through MDE, and then it is dispersed out to the local districts depending on what the grant is. But that went through me for a while because I thought, whoa, you know, we've got to approve criteria for this, et cetera. When money comes in from the feds, the criteria's already set. So it is just a matter of it flowing through. But I can see where the public might think, well, they're not being real responsible here because we usually do it on a consent agenda, which means we don't even discuss it. And if you look at the agenda, it might throw me...
If that happens, do you provide the oversight?
Yes.
Okay. So there is a function.
There is a function, yeah, yeah. It's not like just we're just writing our checks. Yes, we have oversight over, or the department does, yeah, to make sure that the monies are being spent at the local level.
In the correct rate.
In accordance to the federal requirements that they set up. But anyways, so that was something I had learned in these last few months that I wasn't paying too much attention to before while I was sitting in the peanut gallery. So I'm going to open it up to questions if anybody's got any yes or no.
Yes, I was at NAACP dinner in Detroit, Freedom Fund Dinner, and Kamala Harris was the keynote speaker on the running for president. And she made a statement, one of her core issues, that she was going to punch hundreds of millions of dollars in public education, including giving all low-paid public school teachers and the media $10,000 raise. I was wondering if you have any comment on that.
I heard, I was not at the dinner, but I had read that that's what she said. And there is no question that we are underpaying our teachers. And we are feeling it here in Michigan. I know they're feeling it throughout the country, but, you know, we've got to be focused here on Michigan. The schools of education coming out of Michigan State, U of M, Oakland University, any of them that have... any of them, the National Schools of Education, it's less and less students coming out of there to fill our teaching positions. We all, all of the districts have teaching positions open, primarily in high-lead areas, to special education, mathematics, science. Because these young people graduating, I saw a picture in the paper today, I was there in a Wayne State graduation, a student on top of his hat or her hat had put $53,000 some odd dollars. That's how much they had spent and were in debt at this point. Now, I don't know what school they were graduating from, but, you know, teachers finish their schooling, sometimes it's $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 in debt, and go to get a job in a local school district and know, to no fault of their own, a local school district might, if they're lucky, be able to offer them $33,000, $34,000. How are you going to pay back the debt and have a livable wage with that?
And they got to go back and continue to extend their.
Right, yes, yes. So I commend candidate Harris for her idea. It would mean reallocation of funding in DC at this point to be able to go to all of the states. But I do know that this teacher shortage, again, is not just a Michigan issue, though I think we're feeling it worse here. The other thing is the way teachers have been treated over the last 10 years in this state is beyond embarrassing. So having, again, a governor who will, who understands that. In fact, it was just today that the announcement was made for the Educator Advisory Council. Is that the name of it? Where Governor Whitmer has set up an advisory council of educators who she is looking to, to give her advice and feedback on what's going on in the state related to educational issues. So I commend her for that, and it's a step in the right direction. And it's 99% of the group are teachers from all over the state of Michigan. So, you know, it's, it's things like that, too. Yeah, we all need money, let's face it. But we also need to have some recognition that teachers are professionals. They have the most important job in the world, as far as I'm concerned. Every time I drop my two granddaughters off at the door, I have full confidence in the fact they're walking into a safe building, that they will be treated with respect, and that they will learn something that day from their teachers, or their teachers will create an environment where they will learn. And I have full confidence in that. And sometimes I think we take that for granted to a certain extent. But the bashing of the teaching profession that's taken over this last 10 years in the state is, again, embarrassing. Yes, sir?
You brought up the Kalamazoo Promise?
Yes.
If a child wants to go through at Kalamazoo schools from K-12, and then they can go to college, can they choose any college in Michigan? Or do they have to go to Western Michigan University?
No, they can choose, my understanding of it is they can choose any college in Michigan. Yes, yes.
The homeless child, do you address the whole family? Do you help the whole family, not just the child?
Yes, as much as, as you can. And I'm speaking from personal experience here from Macomb. In Macomb County, last year, I think the final count was 1,700 students were identified homeless. And homeless can mean that they've lost their house, and they may be living with a relative, but it's considered a double-up situation and they qualify as homeless. But yes, there is help given to the entire family as far as, you know, trying to get food on the table, trying to help with some rent. Transportation is a big, big issue. And trying to hook them up then with some agencies may be able to help if there's an issue with employment or something. It could be underemployment, and they just don't have enough money to, you know, be able to pay the rent or the house payment, et cetera. But yes, yes, the approach is the whole family. Yes.
What's the, what's the salary package for Dr. Rice?
Dr. Rice is, will be a civil servant, so this is another interesting thing. The salary is, I can tell you, it's $216,000. We can't go above that. We could go below that, but I don't think he's going to, you know, come in and go, oh, sure, I'll take less than that. He might, I don't know. I'm not going to speak for him. But because it's a civil servant position, the salary is not set by the state board, it's set by the budget department at the state of Michigan. So that was given to us, it was put on the application with the understanding there was no negotiation on it.
Is that the total package, or is that, are the benefits on top of that?
That I don't know, whether, you know, healthcare and other benefits would be on top of that. He will have to go into the state retirement system, which I understand is really more of a 401K. And again, I'm kind of talking out of my league here to a certain extent.
Yeah, if you come in, well, he may have been in before, so he'd be able to use the old formula.
Right.
You would think, anyway.
Yeah, yeah. So, but yeah, that salary was not set by the board. We had a long discussion about that. That was another aha that I wasn't aware of, so.
I misspoke. He would have been in under the old state retirement school employees.
When he was in.
When he was in, in Kalamazoo.
When he was in Kalamazoo.
Yeah, but when he took the job, if he's retreated as a civil servant, he'd go under their system.
Right, right, right. Yeah. Yeah, he's out of NIPS, well, will be out of NIPS. Well, again, I appreciate all of the work that all of you do. You got to make changes in 2020, folks. I heard some of you talking earlier about that, every time you turn on the news, that's your motivator.
She didn't tell you the good news was she didn't run for eight years.
Yeah, that is true. Our state constitution, Michigan State, U of M, Wayne State, and state board, they're eight-year chunks, so.
But if you didn't remember it, here is the badge.
I saw that. Thank you, Gary. I appreciate that. Yeah, Gary's got it on one of my buttons. And I still have some stashed away in the basement. Anyways, all right, thank you very much.